The suit one, the suit one is wearing this, I don't know why, my wife got-
I don't know if being a financial guy is a good thing these days or not.
I don't know, that's why I don't wear this Wall Street suit.
Are you from Wall Street?
I feel like Michael Douglas here if I'm not careful. But I, my wife liked this a few years back, I very rarely wear it because I do feel a little too Wall Streety. But one thing I wanted to make a comment about was that in 1993, when the finance system was changed through Proposal A, and I was a practicing local superintendent at the time, and we were trying to anticipate whether we were going to have money or not have money, how it was going to change. And I bet that, just to follow this correlation, that Wall Street folks had a suit like this then and have it now. The difference is, you know what, I should have waited, I always hate that. I'm not doing teaching practices very well when I'm trying to talk during handouts because that's my fault. I gotta give this a second. But where, I guess where I'm going with that is, so this could have been the suit that was worn in Wall Street, and it is today, but they didn't have this in their pocket. They didn't have this thing that is more computing power than my first year in Oakland County, when a whole floor of the Oakland Schools building was a computer system that didn't have what this has. So I really appreciate watching the board's preliminary discussion about this being that this is a finance issue in 93 and where are we now? And it's also kind of how do we take into account these dramatic changes that are impacting our kids? So it's, I really like the title of Finance/Innovation because I think they intersect here and help us think differently. Because this is evolving much more exponentially now. But I mean, it's the truth that this, you know, just think about it, this has more computer power than the whole floor. If you remember that old Oakland Schools building, it was like the third floor was nothing but these tubes and everything else that were, I'm aging myself here, but in the 70s, this was tubes that were being cooled because this was big IBM computer systems and didn't have what this has. So, you know, we have to have in our mindset, what does that mean for us in our thinking about teaching and learning? And then also, what are the financial, I think John framed it very well in some of his earlier comments, but also in his written stuff, that it's how do we finance what this is gonna be and should be? And a little bit to me is like, was it Gretzky or, hopefully, I'm not a hockey guy, but you try to, the great hockey players think about where the puck's gonna be as opposed to where the puck is. And maybe in that same spirit, that's the challenge of this very important study, I think. And we're really, the staff's very excited about working together on this. So John, please.
Very, very well introduced. So we need to figure out the state, what finances are attached to where that puck's gonna be now and just ahead. And this discussion paper is, today we wanted to hear from board members, Mike and others, and encourage the public and stakeholders to also weigh in on this important topic. It has been, as Mike indicated, 20 years almost since Proposal A, the last sort of big round of how do we pay for education. We've made so many changes, it's almost been a fire hose of reform and change since then in how, what we're expecting of schools, what we're expecting of teachers and administrators, education delivery methods, as noted, proliferation of new ways to deliver instruction, new school structures. So the board, as you know, is charged by the Constitution as the general planning and coordinating body for all public education, including higher education, and shall advise the legislature as to the financial requirements in connection therewith. You know, a few years ago, we as a board tried to frame some of that in a, what I would say, in a partial framing way during the budget debates of two or three years ago. What is a threshold of learning expectation and quality outcomes? How would we finance it? Where would we recommend finding the money to fund the right level? I think, you know, the goal of this study is to do a more, I think, thoughtful, rigorous assessment with the help of some independent consultants to really, and with the input of all of us and education stakeholders, to really try to take a fresh look at what does it cost to deliver a quality education, given the way education is going to be delivered in the future. So I think it can be helped by close collaboration and communion with the governor's office and other education stakeholders and assessors who are eager, obviously, to look hard at what updates to our school financing regime do we need? And we're eager to collaborate. And so I just wanted to pose these questions today and invite board members and others to begin to share perspective on what are we looking for in this study? How would we do it? What kind of issues do we want to make sure to address? We do have a committee of the board that includes Eileen Weiser, Dan Varner, and Kathy Strauss, who are gonna be meeting next week with Mike to, based on discussion today, push a little further on the scope of the study and define that more thoughtfully. So let me end and invite board members to share their perspectives and their, you can try to address these questions, you can address other questions that you bring. And we can talk about this and get, and make sure we're responding to your sense of the import and the focus for this type of effort at this moment in history. Eileen and Richard?
Under number one, what are the key outcomes and vision for the study? I already wrote an email to the board saying that one of the issues that we're facing over the next couple of years is a transition to some level of blended instruction. Districts are starting to look at whether they're flipping their classrooms or how it's gonna look, whether it's new computers, changing the way teachers are teaching, really making a wholesale change. And I thought, while I was gone last week, I saw an email that said that one of the big districts in Michigan was talking about doing blended instruction for its high schools, but I can't track it down. So it might have been one of my hopeful dreams. But the issue for me on the outcomes really does include, I understand the horrible frustration, the difficulties districts are facing right now with balancing their budgets, I truly get that, and I am extraordinarily sympathetic. But to be effective, I think that we do want to inform the legislature with this study. And I am looking right now at the transitions that are going on in schools this fall and wondering if by delaying this study for six to eight months for the beginning of it, we would have a better product to not only tell the legislature what we see coming and what we think is wrong with finances at this point, but also help districts see what other innovations are going on. We talked initially about whether this was a Prop A study, a MIPSR study, or whether it's an innovation study along with funding. And I would go for that model. I think, we just went through-
Which model, all those models?
Yeah, no, but trying to find something that isn't a look completely at the past, but is a look toward the future, it's now and toward the future. And I also want to have us be thoughtful about when the study comes out because there's a, before the election, obviously, it might make a splash, but it's gonna get lost in the general confusion. There's lame duck, but if this is too big a study issue, to me, the biggest bang for any buck, no matter who's funding this, because we're not, would be informing the new legislature as they come on board in the first three to five months, and to really have systemic and thoughtful meetings with them about this. You did it a little differently, the study that you did before, I'm trying to remember when that was released, when that information came out, when the study was released, do you remember? What time of the year?
I did it during 2009 and just end of 2010.
So it was before the election?
No.
It was lame duck or 2010, or was it earlier?
It was 2010, it was in the spring.
Spring, that's what I thought, yeah. And to me, that would be really smart. The question is, can we capture enough of what's starting this fall and what's already taking place in Michigan? And can our study folks figure out if any state is ahead of us and has numbers yet to show trends in Michigan costs other places, to try and get a handle on anything? It's not that I don't want to do an analysis of how to change funding in Michigan, but we all know that there's a, we're spending one out of every $3 here on education, on K through post-secondary, there's probably not a lot more money to go into the system. And the question is how to use it really thoughtfully. And something that only lasts for a year or two because we're changing models strikes me as being not the wisest use of what we can do.
Thanks.
But it is a wiser use. Okay, I'm sorry.
Very clever.
I was gonna tell you, if you can, if you close your ninja fruit and other things, you can find stuff easier when you're searching for the counselor information. This is a non sequitur, Eileen, I was just teasing you back. Could be. Richard was next.
This could be very helpful, it could be a waste of time. I think that in terms of financing, we wanna consider what behaviors financing encourages. For example, transportation is just an auxiliary aspect of education, is transportation. If we provide transportation for some families in need, are we setting up expectations? Should my family buy a second car so that we can drive the kids to school? Or should we, or will we be penalized for that by being coming disqualified for free transportation? So where we, and if we, if we adopt some kind of statement like every child has a right to be transported to school, well then we're already, then we're paying for 80% of transportation that formerly had been provided on the local level, and we've sunk more money into the system without having an appreciable change. So there are policy implications or alternatives that have to be thought through. And I think one of the things that we need to do is to evaluate policies so that we don't penalize people for being responsible, that we somehow reward and encourage stakeholder investment, whether those stakeholders are teachers, or parents, or students. And that's a tall order, I admit, but I guess that would be my concern. A lot of, we pour more and more money into educational system and seemingly have less to show for it, and it's because we end up providing things that had been provided before by other people, or by the homes themselves. And so I'd want to focus on what measures actually encourage the behaviors that we want to see from stakeholders.
Cassandra?
I'm sorry, this is Dan, just FYI, I'm entering my physical window, sorry to interrupt.
Dan, do you-
I'm gonna unmute you guys, and I may drop, I have to drop off here for a few minutes, I will call back in momentarily if I do.
Do you want to say anything before that happens?
Do you want to talk now or later?
No, I'm listening and trying to take notes, but I'm gonna lose that opportunity here for a moment. No, I'm, I'm good, I just wanna filter all of it.
So I really appreciate you bringing this forward, John. I think that the study is probably overdue, if anything. As we all know, Proposal A was created before we had a lot of the things that we have today, the number of charter schools, now we have cyber schools, you know, we have a lot of different delivery methods, but the same financial structure. And so I think it's really important for us to take a look at this and do it in a reasonable timeframe. What I'd like to see from it really is almost kind of like a SWOT analysis. If we were to change nothing about Proposal A, what are the strengths that we would have, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and potentially the threats of doing nothing versus, you know, if there were potential changes, what would the strengths and weaknesses be of those? And in hope that that may actually help inform some of the decisions that are being made, not only now, but into the future, about what we want to see from education. So I think that, from my recommendation would be that we do move forward, I think it will take a while to pull this together. I agree that, you know, we need to take the timing into consideration. But I think that, I think that this could be really informative for decision-making.
Kathy, or Mary Ann was next, I think, and then Kathy.
Did you want to go? Oh, go ahead.
John's doing this part, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I guess I'm a little confused on exactly what we're dealing with. I mean, do we have a bucket of money to hire someone to do this? Are we asking for volunteers to come forward and help us with this?
We have some support likely from the foundation community to help support a study of an order of magnitude, I think, that we could do a, be able to hire some thoughtful research consultancies, which we still have to determine who, and exactly what money we have and how we would spend it. But I think there's a lot of support in wanting to help us do this work on behalf of Michigan, so I'm optimistic that we'll be able to, as we put some scope on a study, which is what we need to do, rally resources to support it to be done in a rigorous, thoughtful, independent, credible way, with us all guiding where we want it to go.
So there are groups or agencies out there that can do this sort of thing? And we would, as you say, feed them some of the outcomes we would hope for? Are they in-state, out-of-state? Have they done this sort of thing before?
The committee, the board, and Mike, we can determine that with the potential funders, but I would imagine, and I'm almost certain, we will want to tap some of the great capacity, education research capacity we've got in the state. Did you have any other thoughts on, we really, instead of trying to-
Well, I have, you know, I have a shopping list of things that would be nice to give them, but maybe we ought to wait.
Well, we, as we've talked about this a couple times and said, we would like to do this if we can do it credibly, we also didn't want to pre-cook, what are the assumptions, what are the goals? We wanted to provide ample opportunities in public and in private, but in public is our job for state board members and other stakeholders to sort of name the purpose and the key hopes, and you know, and from hearing from your colleagues, you've heard some very good ideas for what this should be about and how it should be getting done. Just wanted to make sure, Mary Ann, you took that opportunity and you can certainly send privately or to, you know, as you see fit, your directionals on what you'd like to see.
I just want to be clear on what the framework is that we're looking at, and what, therefore, what our input can be-
Please help inform that framework, and then we will use a committee of the board with Mike to put a tighter frame and a more robust description of the scope, the goals, you know, the process. That would be our next step in this, as well as how we would execute it and who's paying for it and who's going to, who we're contracting with to do the work would be the next step coming out of that committee meeting next week.
John, sorry.
Kathy and Nancy, yeah.
Well, I agree with Cassandra that we should be looking at the way the system that we have now works, and how, whether, where it's working well and where it isn't. And one of the problems that I've seen is that it's based on enrollment, and with many of the school districts, especially the urban centers losing enrollment, the population declines, they don't have the, they don't have the resources to really do the job. And maybe that's something we, that's one of the things I think should be examined, and if that's, how that could be improved, to be more useful to the function of public And your point that how does it affect behavior is another thing, because the whole, the whole concept of the money following the child really encouraged, and a lot of people wanted this, a lot of charter schools and schools of choice. And that wouldn't have been possible under the previous funding mechanism. So that's something that should be looked at, too. Is that what we want to continue to do, or do we want to change that in any way? These are all things that I think have to be looked at, and the items that Eileen has brought up certainly have to be included in what's the future look like, what do we think the future looks like? But I don't see postponing it, I think we should start, and this will all come out. It's gonna take, it's gonna take months to do this, we're not gonna do this overnight. So we start the ball rolling, and it'll be months before we actually get anything going, so that we don't have to postpone, it'll be postponed by itself, I think. It's just in the nature of developing this process and securing the funding and with that kind of thing. But I know that there are people interested in helping us, they think it's very timely. And this has been, you know, the Proposal A was passed in 1993, I think? It's almost 20 years. And I know previously under the Burlesley Act, well, they changed it every year or so, and this really hasn't been changed, but they've added a few things at the beginning, but not in the last 10 years probably. So I think it's very timely and that we should be looking at what we think quality education is, I think that's an important part of it, what do we want to fund? And then how do we fund it?
Nancy?
There, I'm on. I think that, I think this is a wise thing to do, however, I think it's important that we recognize human nature, since I think we're all human around here. Human nature, when looking at a problem to solve, if looking at the current problem and the current existing situation, will tinker with it enough to solve it the best way they can. Human nature serves us better, I believe, when we take a look not at what is, but rather what could be. And we look at that high-quality education, student-centered education delivery system that could be, and throw out all of the existing things that currently exist, and think about what that would mean and how we would get there. And that might include things that, you know, that pull in in a collegial way, not just funding sources for education itself, but much like our preschool education, where we've taken 81 funding streams, or some such number like that, and put it under one umbrella and said, let's bring all of these access points to bear on this one situation of early childhood. What if we did that in our, in our education delivery system as a whole for quality education for all students and said, what would that look like? If we, if we were kings and queens for a day, what would that quality education system look like? How would it, how would it, not even just function, but how would it exist? How would you know if it came up and bit you, that that's what you had? And then say, what would it take to get there? I would suggest that we would be far better served if we go that route, because now the sky's the limit. If we say, let's look at what's working and what isn't, we have unintentionally limited ourselves. And I would hope we would not want to limit ourselves, but to look clearly at what was really needed for a quality education delivery system, and then decide what would it take to get us there? We might find up, find that we need a totally different funding system, that we have accesses and opportunities to things we'd never even thought of before because they aren't currently in our system. So I would hope we would, we would open our, open our minds and our thoughts to looking at things totally differently in this, is that even a sentence, totally differently? In an incredibly different way as we go forward, and give the people who are doing this research the opportunity to fly free.
Eileen, you wanted to chime back in, also, Dan, if you come back on, I'd welcome hearing from you, and Greg, too, if you had any perspective to share, because, and I'm happy to share my biases, which are well-known to this group, but clearly, we want to do something that is helpful and thoughtful, a look-to guidance for the governor and legislature, and how we do that well is part of the discussion.
Thanks. Well, Nancy and I didn't talk about this because she was off getting brown and I was working too hard, but that's my, that's my sense, too. The last study was extremely well-received, and we're thinking hard, and we're doing the right things. And the more important, schools are starting to take a look at being adventurous, which is what we want, not just, not just people who are outside the school system and providing education, but the schools themselves. Anything that doesn't capture some of the really creative education that's going on around the state right now would be a mistake in my eyes. We have this golden opportunity to showcase some things, talk to them, see how it works for them financially, what their issues are that don't work for them, because that's the way we want to head. As far as the very good questions that John posed, so for me, it is, yep, we know that there are problems with Prop A, we know that there are huge problems with MIPSRs, but what are we moving toward, and what is actually working, and what's not working for those people, too? The focus of the study for me, I have a K-12 bias, because I believe that the post-secondary institutions can and will take care of their own lobbying. This is a study that, to me, is so important for K-12 that, and the issues on how post-secondary is funded are different than what we have. Quality education, for me, it's the whole student as defined in our goals, the time that we spent talking prior to this on what a student should look like, what a successful graduate should look like, include the ability to function in the adult world, but not just in academics. When I see reports of schools dropping science instruction, not having adequate science instruction, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. And you know, Kathleen and I would go to war on the arts, right Kathleen? Here we go. So it's the whole student for me. I've already been specific on what I want to see addressed, which is what we're moving toward, not just what we have currently. And the process for me that would best achieve the goals of the study is this group meeting next week, to really tighten down what things can be included in the study, what are related well enough to each other that they make a cohesive sense. But obviously, yes, obviously, that has to be tempered, too, by the researchers, because, you know, they're certainly gonna weigh in. So there's a, you know, this ad hoc committee, and the board, and researchers on the board as we try to develop all this. Thanks.
Richard, you wanted to?
Cassandra, you had mentioned a SWOT analysis, and I'm still puzzling what that means.
So it's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
Okay.
So what's the good, what's the bad, what's the future if nothing changes, versus if we make a change, how do you tinker with those, what are the strengths and weaknesses?
Okay, so SWOT is spelled with an O and not an A, okay, that helps.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
Was that it, Richard?
Yes, thank you.
Mike?
I wanted to mention that, you know, to me, we've talked about this, we're looking forward to the meeting next week. And I think it's kind of, as Cassandra said, first of all, it's long overdue. But I also think it's an opportunity to think about, I guess I'm repeating myself, but where the hockey puck, the hockey puck, the hockey puck is gonna be. And a little bit of this is the old kind of visual image of trying to change the tire while the car is moving, so it makes it much more difficult. We're doing this, and it's not a static time, and even, even no matter when we end this, things will have changed by then. But one reason I would just, if I had to pick the biggest reason I think it's worth doing, is we just don't allocate the resources right. We all talk about the brain research, we know about early childhood, and we still continue to just put a gun to our head and fund it in a way that makes no sense at all. And then another issue is, as tough as it is, it's discouraging to me to hear people my age in particular, but coming in and complaining about some of the retirement potential changes. Well, we can't keep spending one out of $4- Well, we can't keep spending $1 out of $4 for retirement. I mean, we just can't. Something has to happen. We can't pretend we're not, you know, there's fairness in retirement, we need to try to do that in the best way we can. But right now, this has gotten so far out of hand, where it's, you know, pretty much $1 out of every $4 that a district spends. And then finally, I think the brain research would be a big component that would be just fascinating to try to understand better, because we know, you know, the one that is almost cliche now is the early childhood one. But there's even brain research shown about the subtleties of class size. And class size is probably the single biggest factor, other than what we determine, you know, to be salaries and some of that. So what are the nuances of the brain research supporting low, even lower, class size in pre-K3, but maybe not being as freaked out about it in some other areas? And my daughter, who's secondary, will be on me for this. But, I mean, it's just, we need to be thoughtful and hear what it is. But it's really just been a cognitive dissonance, almost for me, that we obsess about some of that for kids in their senior year, and then put them into a 500-person lecture room the next year. And the tremendous trade-offs we could have, if we thought more clearly about that and tied it to the research on it, I think we would get past the rhetoric as a state and a nation, and really do something for early childhood that would be very phenomenal. And when you add the high stakes of accountability now for teachers in particular, you know, where their jobs are even, to some degree, at stake, they deserve to have kids come to them better prepared, and, you know, so that they're not responsible for what they've been dealt, in a way. And the only way we can do that is all kids get higher-quality early childhood opportunities. So, I mean, this is a tremendous opportunity to just rethink the whole game. And then, as John said, how do you fund that game? And, I mean, we're looking forward to it. But I do think the timing, you know, there is a political issue I hadn't thought about, and we do have new people coming on board after the first of the year, which would be good. That doesn't mean we don't start, this is going to take some time. But that would be good to really have something ready, to help them not just shoot from the hip, but understand the decisions that they're making, and why, and how the board can inform those.
Greg, did you have any comments?
Yeah, no, I would echo a lot of what Superintendent just said. I do think that you don't want to get tripped up over the timing, just because I think you want to put together a thoughtful, well-researched study, and you just don't want people to view it through a political prism of an election-year document, or something that you're, you know, we're trying to get through in, you know, lame duck, which I don't think is the case. And I would say that, from the governor's perspective, he is very much focused on funding outcomes. And on a go-forward basis, how we can make thoughtful, I guess, investments in providing real tangible results in the K-12 system would be, it is his focus, it has been his focus. And would it be helpful to have a study that, you know, goes after some of the things that, some of the tough things in education, like class size, like early childhood? Absolutely. And I think as long as, you know, that's the board's focus, it would definitely be a helpful document, and help start a discussion that's probably overdue.
Thank you. Dan, are you back in?
I am, and was able to listen to almost everything.
Is there anything you'd like?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One is, I think three comments. One is, so I'd love the scope to be, to include early childhood and K-12. I do agree with Eileen, that's the post-secondary world. I feel like there's a lot of work already being done there, and probably we can't make as big a difference in that space as we'd like to, although I kind of wish some limited exception. And John, you and I have talked a little bit about that before. But I would love to make sure that we're covering early childhood and K-12 in terms of the scope of the study. Second thought is, I want to make sure, I want to put out there, our role as an organization, really, is to be the kind of non-ideologically driven, you know, public voice, policymaking, policy suggesting, anyway, recommending arm. And so I really want to push for us to make sure that we create a pretty solid foundation of data. I mean, let's, you know, let's make sense of the data for everyone else, and be really data-driven in recommendations that might come out of it. And then the third thing is, I also think, I think it's building off of both Cassandra's point and Eileen and Nancy's point, I think it's probably both, a SWOT analysis, where we begin with kind of where we are. And I think we're coming at this with the assumption that the funding infrastructure that we have in place right now doesn't work. We should document how it doesn't, frankly, like what would happen if we were to continue to use it? You know, and in the alternative, given the future that we all expect to have, and as best we can tell right now, what's the funding mechanism that would work to really maximize that future, what we want to create? So in all of that, my third point is, I think we want to be pretty bold. And by that, what I mean is, I think we should recognize that this is the first, what this will amount to is a first, it's like a serve, right, in a tennis match? I mean, so there will be a lot of lobbying afterwards, there's a lot of gameplay to be had after this comes out. But what I'd like it to be is a first voice on this stuff, in order to try and set the table for everybody, just kind of being driven by rational thought, data, and recognition of where we are and what is possible.
So we want to serve an ace, but without using ideological spin.
Oh, very good. That'd be nice.
Thank you, Dan. And these are, I think, terrific guidance from everybody, not, I don't think unreconcilable, I mean, some different points of view on the study. By, you know, full disclosure, you know, I think you all know my interests and biases a bit. I certainly want to understand the implications of the system we've got. I think, as Dan better articulated it, what's wrong with the way we finance. But, you know, even as we did it before, we did try to say, if we had a blank slate, and if we were to focus on what is a quality education, and what are the outcomes that we really want, and define those well, and then figure out, what do we need to do to pay for getting those outcomes? Appreciating that there may be a lot of different ways to get to those outcomes in the education system, and how do we support that? That would be sort of my bias, always, in this kind of study, to really look hard at what do we mean by quality? What are the outcomes we're shooting for? And what are the ways we must support, given where do you get the bang for the buck? What is essential to support? You know, even the discussion today with counselors, you know, is a little kind of kernel of, is this functionality, not the people, but so important, and does it get you outcomes? Where does it fit in the panoply of how we fund schools? So those are my biases. I do think we're probably, the timing, I agree, no one wants this to be a politicized exercise. So we should work out the timing, as well as getting started doing it, so that we serve, in Dan's words, something that is met by engagement with the policymakers and stakeholders in a way that's going to be most fruitful. And I think we do need to wrestle a bit with the scope, because, you know, I agree with many of you, K-12 is where a lot of effort is needed. I appreciate Dan and others' encouragement on early childhood. I'm always loathe to kind of decouple P-20, you know, from itself, because we are trying to think seamlessly, and I'm, as you know, thinking of, are there ways we can focus in on either early childhood and K-12, or K-12 with ways that maybe grab some of the proxies that are out there for what, you know, how we pay for higher education at a decent level, that are less intensive in our part, and use quality stuff that's being generated by many stakeholders, in looking at either the bookends or on the higher ed piece. But I think we should always look at, what's the outcome? We want well-educated people with credentials that help them get a job, succeed, or create their own business, and we can't, you know, we can't chunk up the system again, in my view. We have to at least place K-12 in a holistic context. So those are just my, you know, sharing myself in terms of hopes for this. But I think with the committee, we will wrestle with it further, and make sure we're communicating fully about how we're proceeding, and invite the public and stakeholders to weigh in and help us with this, because I think it is overdue. But it's only due if we do it in a thoughtful and effective manner, to look at how we will finance the system for the future. Mary Ann?
Something I'd like to add, and this kind of piggybacks on the smaller class sizes, because I think we have to recognize that really, nothing is going to be accomplished as long as we have 40 children in a classroom, in particular, in our most impoverished areas. And so I, while I applaud this recognition, and coupling it with brain study issues, I would also like to couple it with poverty, issues of poverty, in that whatever study we undertake, take a particular look at those issues. And that was something Proposition A was originally intended to correct, but things got lost along the way. And so maybe if we could gather some of those issues back and include them.
Paul, I apologize. Did you have any guidance or thoughts that you wanted to share?
Well, I appreciate, you know, the discussion taking place. I think certainly that's one of the key elements, and I think when we look at it from, as Nancy said, and many of you have echoed, from the standpoint of, if we could just start with a clean slate, where we want to go, and then work from there, I think some of those items are key. And I also like the elements of saying, where there's some of these pockets of excellence, then also seeing what are barriers that they're seeing for this. Because really, outcomes, I'm all about outcomes. Education, being a career and technical educator, that is how we do education, if we will. And we are seeing that in our academic courses as well, where people are going within your physics, and becoming to a standards-based, outcome-based style of education. Then, of course, being able to measure that. So I think any time that we can look at it and think creatively, and again, innovatively, is a very positive thing. Certainly, resources are tight, we know that, and also, resources, obviously, to do this study. And if it's focused, and it's going to provide us that information, I think it can be invaluable. I know we look at education, and being in the middle of my career, it's exciting times. I mean, there's a lot of things that are scary about it, because we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns. But I think with that, you also look at the opportunity that can come from that situation. And I think something like this certainly would be worthwhile, and certainly would lend and put a good perspective on it.
John, you know, I know we'll have chances during the committee, and then the whole board. I think the scope issue on P-20, there might be kind of a compromise, if we want to think about it this way, where, since we are so interested in more kids getting as much college credit as they can get before they graduate, whether that's in five years, with an early college, or whether it's AP courses, or whatever these issues may be, maybe that's the bridge there, that at least we, because in a way, those are interspersed into what we used to think of as K-12. Those really are part of K-12 now. And the way that we've reinterpreted kind of the rules on early college opens the door more to more schools trying to at least have a school within a school that's an early college, for the sake of discussion. So, I mean, in a way, we planted our foot partly into beyond K-12, anyway, and maybe rather than try to handle the whole 20, there might be some compromise scope there that would at least get us that piece. Okay?
Thank you, everybody.
And thanks, John, for the way you led this. I think it's really got potential, really good potential. And this was a great start to get some of these out on the table today, and we've got a team that's ready to meet with you, I think it's next week. Right? Is that next week? Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mertz. Maybe before we break, C is the discussion regarding criteria for grant program. Are there any questions? Nancy, please.
Actually, I do, and it's more, I guess, well, there may be more information on them than else. I'm wondering, this, one of the things I've been most frustrated about on approval of grant criteria is, I feel like a rubber stamp, because so much is in federal legislation, that I can't do much about it, anyway. So my question to the staff is, when we say that federal legislation requires each state to report annually on 20 indicators of performance for children ages 3 through 21 receiving special education services, are we, as a department and as a staff, are we satisfied with these criteria? And how has Michigan fared with these criteria? And the reason I ask this is, we have an opportunity to lobby at the federal level as well. And if we're not satisfied with these criteria, and we don't feel that we've fared well, because we don't believe they're accurate or plausible, or whatever, then it would be good to know, so that we can take that forward.
Lyndon, who just ran in when she heard us get to this item?
[laughing]
Are you leaving, or what? Okay.
Boy, that's a good question. Federal legislation actually gives us the formula and tells us how much money each of the locals gets for this program. The three criteria that are in the annual report that we have to do to the federal government about this program are about whether we transition infants and toddlers appropriately into preschool services, whether they are served in inclusive environments, so they're not segregated. And now I've got to think quick about what the third one is for preschool. And then, some of the others, like children getting referred and evaluated in a timely manner, are included in the other 17. So preschoolers are included in those numbers. I think the one that we have been struggling with the most and working on is the natural environments one for preschoolers, because our funding mechanism kind of incentivizes serving those children in non-inclusive settings. And we have been working very hard, and are going to propose some changes to the special ed rules. So I don't think it's the federal requirement that's a problem, it's how we've done it in our state. And some of that is historic, because we didn't have other environments for preschoolers that were publicly funded when the rules were originally written. So we're working on very hard, changing some administrative rules to see if we can't fix that. So it's not a problem with the federal goal, it's really a problem with us.
But that's good to know. That helps us, as we approve these, to know that there isn't something we should have done, that we didn't know we should have done.
Yeah, I think if we had that opportunity, we would bring it to you, but it's not, this is pretty cut and dried, how we give out the money. They tell us what to do.
Thank you. Richard, please.
I was intrigued by the paragraph here, after it says, it states what the requirements to grant are, what the purpose of the grant, and then it says, "Chronically underperforming schools typically have a significant population of special education students." I was intrigued by that. They're not special education students, if they are special education students are, their scores are not counted in the measure that's used to determine whether a school's underperforming or not. So I don't know what kind of implications that has. And special education programs and services provided to children age 3 through 5 have a considerable impact on future performance and success. I'd never heard that. Is there any documentation, any studies, any, how do we know this?
Well, on your first point, that only, there are about, depending on how you count it, as many as 10% of students have an IEP or are special education. It depends on how you count that, the exact number. But at least 8% do. We can only exclude 2% from the calculation of, for accountability purposes. So most students who are identified with an IEP So most students who are identified with an IEP do get counted in the school's accountability formula. It's only the most severely impacted students who are excluded. So it is true that many students are counted and part of the way that special education is determined, and you'd really need Eleanor for older kids, is learning disabilities is partly how far behind you are. So you get identified as special education, and one of the premises of our early childhood programs is that if we can identify children who are developing more slowly earlier, perhaps we can intervene and prevent special education later. So for children who are identified from three to five, I guess the measure of success is how many at five or beyond no longer need special education services? And I don't have those numbers at my fingertips, but we could do some investigation to figure that out. So there are children who are served in special education programs when they're three to five and then go on to kindergarten and do okay.
Of course, the argument could be made that they would have done okay in kindergarten without those services. I mean, that's, that's, we are...
Yeah, you don't have, when you have an entitlement program like special education, you don't have a control group that hasn't had services. So, you know, I don't exactly know how you would study that. You could just say that the problem was taken care of and they no longer needed the services, but you wouldn't know how they would have done without it.
Okay. I'm trying to distinguish statements of faith, which this apparently is, from statements of fact. And I don't mean to say that this doesn't, I mean, intuitively, it sounds good. It's, and if we're going to get money to institute these services, you know, what could it hurt? But still, when we have to make decisions later on because the funding runs short or something like that, then it's important to know the difference between statements of faith and statements of fact.
It's based this weekend.
Well, there's money, so it's a fact, right?
No, I mean, there's results.
But she just said that we don't really have any results because we haven't done any testing.
We do have, we're required to report on how kids are doing on outcomes, so they're kind of put in buckets. So we have children who start out way below their same-aged peers and stay below, children who start out way below and reach the level or above their same-aged peers, and that's in three different areas of development, knowledge and skills, meeting their own needs, and social emotional development. So we do calculate how kids are doing, we just don't know how they would have done otherwise. But we do report, that's the, excuse me, the other thing we report is on those child outcomes and how the aggregate of how, how many children are kind of changing their trajectory.
Sure.
So that, in a way, you could think that maybe they would stay on the same trajectory if you didn't intervene.
But I guess I'm, again, I'm concerned, very deeply concerned, because testing at preschool to grade, to age five, does not have nearly the predictive quality that testing, say, of second graders has, and it would be wrong to give members of this board the impression that it does.
Well, we do the best we can with the tests that are available.
Okay.
But there are, there are programs, though, in some school districts, I remember, I think it was, it was in Wayne County North, maybe North, where they had a big program on early intervention and it seemed to be working really well. I don't know that they tested, that they had a control group that they used, but the kids who were really slow and developing, they saved a lot of people from going into special education, and they considered it highly successful.
And I think they're...
Whether they had a control group, I don't know, but they, I know that they had all kinds of programs that showed how these students were doing well in general and didn't need special education anymore because of their early intervention services. They assume it's from the early intervention services.
Yeah. And I think Kathy...
And parents bring the kids to the school for the services. They obviously think they need, they need this intervention.
And I think, to your point, that's correct. That's a little different than the entitlement part. These were extra dollars that Northville chose to use to interdine earlier, and then their LD, in particular, their LD kid population went down dramatically. It's different than this grant program, but it infers some of that, even though it's not a direct control group. And that's where they've made the argument, and many have accepted it, that when we had the Northville folks and some others in here a few years ago, that people are redirecting a lot of their money, as tough as it is, they're taking some of their existing general fund money and putting it into some of these programs earlier, and then they don't have some of the same consequences of these large numbers of special needs kids, especially in LD.
And it saves a lot of money later.
Yes.
Yeah.
In fact, I'm trying to remember the rule we tried to get changed years ago. It's a federal rule that we could use money differently so that, you know, in a way, we were saving special ed kids. I can't quite...
I remember Senator Cassis was really pushing this, and she wanted legislation at the state level, but she was really very supportive of it.
But these are points, well, I mean, there's a lot of room for further study on issues that I think the feds would be well-served also to do what we're going to do with the finance study, which is to try to make sure that the direction we've had for 30 and 40 years really is paying off and where it isn't and where we could redirect. So it's good points.
Yeah.
Kathy and then Eileen, please.
I had another question about these grant applications. When it says the sort of formula, the federal formula, that's just what it says. It doesn't list the criteria. You're talking about 20 items. That's, it's not just this application, it's a lot of, this is the standard operating procedure. It doesn't list what the criteria, the federal criteria really are, so it might be helpful to put that in the format.
We used to do that. You probably remember that. We used to do that and then the format changed, so if the...
I know. I'm thinking maybe it was better the other way.
If the board wants the format to change again, we'll be glad to do it that way.
To me, it would be helpful to know what those criteria are, I don't know for anybody else.
Let's do that. There's no downside to...
Seems to me that would be a good thing to actually list what the criteria are we're talking about.
Or is there? You give me a look. No, so, speak up if there's something I'm not thinking about on why. I mean, if it's going to be helpful, let's just do that.
It might be helpful to the people who are applying for the grants, too.
Are you comfortable with that, Lyndi?
Yeah, I honestly don't know how that's calculated because the federal government gives it to us already calculated and tells us who to give how much to.
Oh.
So, I mean, but we must have someone who can dig that out and figure it out.
We'll present what we can and what we know.
They can't give you a copy of what they do.
And... We'll provide what we can understand and know, and what we can't, I guess, we'll accept the money anyway, is probably what we're saying, even under their...
Okay, we'll accept the money. How do we hand it out?
Unless you're saying otherwise.
It'd be good to know how it is allocated.
That's, that's right. I mean, if it is knowable, we'll provide it. I'm just trying to cover Lyndi a little bit by saying, she's not even sure it's that clear. I think it was Eileen and then Richard again.
Having not brought this comment up earlier when we were talking about the study, I'm going to forcibly wedge it in here where it has no place either. But the Citizens Research Council just did a study on the rise in special ed costs in the state, and I happened in my research yesterday, somewhere on an article in Education News called "Mathematics Education Being Outwitted by Stupidity," that calls for research on the fact that the very interventions that we're doing for kids who are struggling in math are old math instruction, which is sort of like whole language kids being remediated by phonics. So one of the things that we need to be talking about, I think, when we do the study, is at least bring up whether or not there is something going on here with these increased costs with the curriculum that schools are using. I know that the increase in the cut scores, from my perspective, I thought that there would be some discussion about that in schools going forward. Is it the curriculum we're using? Is it the way that our teachers are trained? Is it the interventions? You know, what is it? But it's a moment in time with that, with the Citizens Research Council study out, to mention that that's still rising, and the studies don't exist yet to compare kids who had reform-based curriculum, K through 12, trying to go into STEM or other areas, with kids who didn't have it. Those studies just simply don't exist, but to bring it up as a parameter for what schools are facing, I think is important. Sorry, Lyndi, I took the liberty. Sorry.
Richard, please.
There's an urban myth that folks in the car factory were, they were making parts, and they wanted to increase the quality of output of parts, and they thought, I know, we'll pay a $5 bonus to every worker who can identify a flawed part and bring it in. Well, it was an extremely popular program because all kinds of workers were bringing in, you know, five, six, seven flawed parts every day, but the ultimate, the end quality didn't seem to be going up. So they looked at some of those secret cameras, security cameras, which they only turned on at night, well, they turned them on during the day and they saw a worker would take apart, hit it with a hammer, and they'd turn in and get five bucks. And if we don't have the studies that guarantee, I mean, if we only rely on the reporting, the self-reporting, you know, people will do this in good faith, unlike my urban myth story, but still, we credit people for having identified early signs of special education or ADHD, and then we may find further down the line that it makes no ultimate difference in end, in end product. Now, I would be happy if that middle paragraph were simply changed to this, this grant is based on the following assumptions, so that we can look at those assumptions again rather than, and I know it's a fine point here and maybe you see me as quibbling, and I apologize for that, but I think that it is good to identify the assumptions on which policies are based, so that if we, if it does come to our attention that an assumption's misfounded, then we can reevaluate a given policy.
Any difficulty with doing that in terms of the feds or anything? We can...
We can identify what the assumptions are.
Sure. Well, I mean, we have a whole paragraph's worth here, I think.
Isn't that what we do?
Okay.
I see what you mean. You're saying for future stuff, when we can, yeah. So the point, well-taken, that when we believe it's an assumption, we can add that phraseology, and then there's other times when it's clearly not an assumption. Are you comfortable with that, Lyndi?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you. Okay? We'll break and it's 12:05. What timing would you like to suggest? 1 o'clock? Okay. See you all at 1 o'clock, and for guests...